By ensuring educational excellence, we challenge and inspire all learners to positively impact their world.
Good morning, good evening, good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone here. Today is Tuesday, October 19th, and it is our regular or general board meeting. So we're about to start when Joan does roll call. Go ahead, Joan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Trustee Angelina?
Present.
Trustee Hokumer?
Here.
Trustee Joseph?
Here.
Trustee McKendy?
Here.
Trustee Bass?
Here.
Trustee Whitman?
And Trustee Young?
Here.
Thank you.
Wonderful to see everybody. I love a full audience. And we have a wonderful evening filled with about six recognitions, which happens to be mine and probably I could speak for most of the, uh, the fee, everyone's favorite part of the meeting. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with our first recognition. This is the College Board National African American Program. We missed you last meeting, and now we're happy to see you for this meeting.
Yes.
So Dr. Roberson?
Yes, and I have Dr. Smith, the principal of Grove High School here with me. We are celebrating the College Board National African American Recognition Program. The college board, which administers the PSAT and SAT among its activities, recognizes academic excellence through its national recognition programs. The following students are College Board National African American Recognition Program scholars. They earned this recognition by excelling on their PSAT in MSQT, PSAT, PSAT 10, or AP exams and in their classrooms. Students who may be eligible have a GPA of a 3.5 or higher and have excelled on the PSAT, um, PSAT 10, or earned a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams. And are African American or Black, Hispanic, or American or Latina, Latinx, Indigenous, and/or attend school in a rural or small town. Congratulations to the following Grove students. We're going to have Dr. Smith announce each student scholar. And when your name is announced, if you would walk up the stairs to my right and to your left and come stand over by the board, we do want a picture of the entire group. So, Dr. Smith?
Congratulations to these following students. Alex Warren, Dana Wesley, Iara Jones, Jacob Gray, Camber Williams, Lauren Morris, Lauren Sample, Neely Allen, Noah Drake, Nyla Willis, Paris Allen, and Rachel Acaba. Congratulations to all these students.
Let's give them another round of applause.
And many of them have family members here this evening as well, so congratulations to all of their families also.
Our next, our next recognition, we want to say congratulations to Grove freshman Angus McDonald, who made the U.S. Swimming Scholastic All-American Team. He was one of only 128 freshmen in the nation to be appointed to the team for 2021. USA Swimming selected 1,231 high school students, student athletes, 19 of whom are also from Michigan. Can we have Angus come to the front? May I have our new, uh, Michael Phelps? Thank you. So our next, um, I have Principal Kyle Hall here from Seehole. Our next recognition is for a perfect ACT score. Thirty-six is the highest possible composite score on the ACT exam, according to the press release by act.org. On average, only around one-tenth of 1% of students earn an ACT top score. We want to say congratulations to Brady Wright for that perfect score on the ACT. This is actually a recognition for both Grove's and Seehole's students. We are honored to recognize the following seniors who have been named commended students in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. About 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2022 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students place among the top 50,000 scores of more than 1.5 million students who entered the 2022 competition by taking the 2020 preliminary SAT and National Merit Scholarship qualifying tests. Those being named commended have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. I'm going to let Kyle Hall congratulate the Seehole seniors.
Congratulations to Anna Broderick, Jonathan Cloutier, Anthony Long, and Tyler Nguyen.
And the Grove's National Merit Commended Students are Neely Allen, Benjamin Glick, Jacob Handler, Clarice Kim, Bennett Roman, and Alex Warren. Congratulations to the Grove's National Merit Commended Students.
the Concert Master of the Detroit Symphony Youth Orchestra. Clarice is the, oh, don't go anywhere, Clarice. Clarice is the Concert Master of the Detroit Symphony Youth Orchestra, the top youth ensemble of the Detroit Symphony Orchestra. She received this honor last year as well. This is such an honor and wonderful opportunity for Clarice, and Mr. Sharver prepared her well for being a concert master. Last year was virtual, my understanding, and so this is your first year being able to do this in person. Grove's is also well represented this year in the Detroit Symphony Youth Orchestra. We have Elodie in the viola section and Kason in the flute section. So congratulations, Clarice, and we can't wait to see you, uh, this, this fall. And our last recognition, I have to just say, this feels really good to have all of these recognitions. So what a great school district, though, and great families. Our last recognition is Wes Maples Elementary Model School Library. If I can have Jason Pezamasca, Terry Betts, and Terry Whitfield come down. For those of you who do not know, Wes Maple is the model library for the state of Michigan. On September 29th, we had the state superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice, come and visit Wes Maple to see some of the outstanding programs that they have running within their school. And for the, throughout the year, they will serve as a model for all other libraries throughout the, school libraries throughout the state of Michigan. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pez, proud principal of Wes Maple, and let him talk a little bit about the programs. And then, of course, we want to get your pictures as well.
Thank you, Dr. Roberson. First of all, I just want to congratulate all of our students again. Uh, it was a little point of pride. I have a couple Wes Maple kids that I had back, so awesome work, guys. It's exciting to see you up here on the stage. Ben, I think you're about to go over there. So, um, and second of all, I just want to give a round of applause to Mrs. Whitfield and Mrs. Betts for all their hard work in our library. We've really spent the past couple of years doing a lot of work to make sure that our collection has been diversified. When COVID happened, Mrs. Betts and Mrs. Whitfield just came up with some incredible ideas to keep our kids engaged in our library system, to make sure that books were accessible to all. And I'll let Mrs. Betts just share a little bit about a few of the things we did.
Um, a few of the programs that we were able to launch last year during COVID were book bag surprises, which several of our schools participated in throughout the year, where we sent kids, um, bags of books home over the breaks that were, uh, selected by librarians based on the information that parents and students shared about their interests. So that was really fun, and we got a lot of positive feedback from our parent community and from our students about that. Also, we launched the Myself and Books Read Aloud and Discussion Program, which happens on Thursday nights from 7:00 to 7:30 p.m., most Thursday nights. And that is simply featuring, um, books that have been selected, um, through an extensive process, um, by Michigan school librarians participating in the committee out of our Michigan Association for Media and Education. And we read those books aloud and share them with students and ask them questions about, um, what the, the books, what they connect with and things like that. So those are just a couple of our featured things.
And we also, um, cleared all the bookshelves in the summer. I was a little bit nervous, but we sent home as many books as we wanted to off our Wes Maple library shelves, um, with all of our kids, because we knew it was important to get books in their hand over the summer. We got most of them back, so we're happy about that. But really just the, the ingenuity that Mrs. Betts and Mrs. Whitfield had over that time to ensure that our students were connected to our library resources, not only at Wes Maple, but Maple, but spreading this throughout the district. So I'm so thankful to have them as a part of our Wes Maple team. Thank you so much.
Again, I want to thank, um, and congratulate all of our students today, as well as our Wes Maple team, for your accomplishments, and thank all of the parents and the community members who are here to support your students, because we know that it's a partnership for our students to be successful. So thank you, and this ends our recognition for this evening.
Now you can all see why this is the trustee's very favorite part of the meeting. What a wonderful evening of successes. We congratulate each and every one of you. We're so proud. Dr. Parents, tell them I love you, give them a big hug, because without their support, um, success, I mean, it's a partnership of success. So thank you, everyone, and we're going to take a five-minute recess, recess, in case anyone wants to slip out, because we've got a long meeting of business ahead of us, so we completely understand if you do. Seeing as recess is over, we're going to resume the meeting. And our next item on the agenda is additions and deletions. Trustees, do we have any additions and deletions?
No.
For the sake of the good, okay, moving on. Let's go to the next piece on our agenda, and this is the superintendent's report. So, Dr. Roberson, do you want to stay here with the bench, the podium, wherever you're comfortable?
I'm going to hear.
Great.
So, uh, first, superintendent's update. We continue to be, um, under OCHD's mandate, our all Oakland County superintendents meet with, um, the Oakland County Health Division on a weekly basis. One of the things that they have shared with us is that, starting October 26th, vaccines for, for children ages five to 11 will go to the FDA. They're expecting that the FDA will approve on November 1st, and that vaccines for ages five through 11 will be available either the week, uh, second week of November or the third week of November. So just wanted to update families in case that is an option for them. The other thing is that, uh, last week, we had Hanover present on our equity audit. Uh, we are going to have both short-term action steps and also long-term, which will be part of our strategic planning. We have been meeting with, had a number of requests for proposals, um, some that we liked very much, but we are balancing that request for proposal with also being fiscally responsible in terms of using a company to help us with our strategic planning. We expect to have more detail for you, um, next week. Last thing, we didn't have this as a recognition today, um, but we will have them here in a future recognition. Our Grove's, um, boys tennis team won the state championship. A shout out to the Grove's tennis team, and we are, um, we're definitely going to have them here in the future.
Wonderful. More recognitions. Let's hope they do not stop coming. We love this. Moving on, we have board comments and requests. Trustees, do you have any comments at this time?
I would just say that I've seen a couple of reports recently that have some of our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools listed among top schools in the country and the state. And I guess we know why, after tonight's award and the recognition of all the students who have done well. So it's just really, uh, an honor to see our school just written in the news like that.
Wonderful. Thank you, trustees. Any further comments, trustees? Okay, we're going to move on to public comments. My first public comment, I have Allison Haffey. Please come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Allison Haffey, and I have four children in the BPS district, a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and twin second graders. I'm currently teaching preschool, but not in this district. I have 17 years of experience teaching young children between the ages of three and 10, so needless to say, the education and well-being of children is a passion of mine. I'm fully aware that the mask mandate issued by Oakland County is still in effect, which means that BPS students must wear masks all day at school, but I believe that at some point, this decision will be back in your court, and that's why I'm here to speak today. Much of the data and information on the benefits of mask-wearing in school shows that masks make little to no difference in the spread of COVID. In Europe, masks are not mandated for children under the age of 12, and there are no worse outcomes for children there, even during the spread of Delta. But I'm not a medical professional or a scientist, and I'm assuming you've seen the data anyway, so instead I want to talk more about my area of expertise, the education of young children. Masking young children is not a harmless intervention. Masks impede the learning process, restrict healthy social interaction, and take away from the enjoyment of school. Having taught elementary school for many years, I know how difficult it can be to teach children to read and write. I taught in my school's resource room for three years, and I can't even imagine trying to help those struggling students with letter sounds and sounding out words while wearing a mask. I know firsthand how difficult it is to hear students with a mask and how hard it is for them to hear me. This masking intervention hurts our new and struggling readers. It also hurts our students who need help with speech and language. There are young children in this district who were testing out of speech services but are now requiring speech help again, because their speech has been so impeded by masks. As teachers, we try to make personal connections with our students. We want them to make personal connections with other kids. Our children now spend at least six hours per day unable to see anyone smile or make any facial expression. This is not a healthy way to grow up, and it's leading to apathy about school and many of our kids. But worst of all, in my opinion, is that you have taken away any hope that our young children will be able to attend school maskless. Your district-wide email on August 16th, in which you said that you would mandate masks even during low and moderate transmission levels, has shown to me that your decision-making is neither rational nor scientific. So I have to, to assume that it's political, which gives me little hope that you will be making sound decisions in the future. My husband and I are seriously considering homeschooling after this school year. I'm not saying this as a threat. I'm telling you this to illustrate just how much we've lost hope in your ability to make rational decisions around masks that benefit our kids and their education. Masks are not a harmless intervention, and I believe that I should have the choice to send my child to school without one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haffey. Our next speaker is Joan Durella.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You want us to do what you think is best, and let me emphasize "think." You know very well Fauci and the CDC say something different each month. You know this incredibly well-informed, intelligent group of people who have been coming to you to these meetings since last spring are way more informed on the science of masking and the COVID vaccine, yet, as educated adults in your positions, you have never, ever, ever asked one question from the science we give you. I have to ask myself why. Why haven't you asked? Really? Masks don't stop the spread of viral bacteria and viruses, and the manufacturer says that on their packaging? The micro, micronisms coming out of our mouths are so small they escape right through the mask? Really? I did not know that. Can I have some more information on that, so we can make informed decisions? I never heard you say, "Can I have some more info on VAERS?" And the numbers reported by doctors and nurses of patients who have died from the vaccine, have long-lasting illnesses from the vaccine, and who are permanently damaged from the vaccine? Oh my gosh, this is horrible, this is tragic. Can I have some more information? Nope. I've never heard you ask more information on the vaccine and the short and long-term effects. I've never heard you ask for more information on the protocols that could have saved 75 to 85% of the COVID deaths. But as I said, there is a new drug that will cure, but if I said to you, "There's a new drug that'll cure all cancers by 75 to 85%," you'd all just sit there? No, you'd be asking, "But why not this?" So I had to ask myself why, and all I can surmise is this: pride. I think there is more to what you're doing. I think pride has taken over, and pride is when you can't be wrong. It's easy to make decisions based on half-truths when you're all there thinking like-minded. It dawned on me when I read this from the Oakland County Democratic Party. This popped up, Oakland County Democratic Party. "We know Republicans are gunning for school boards around the country with the intent to influence our children's curriculum. We also know that we want our children to be learning about evolution, the scientific method, and the real history of racism in the United States. We're holding the training this Saturday for individuals interested in running for the local school board, and we'd love to see you there." So, you guys, all I can, you know, after all this, all you have made COVID and masking and CRT and everything else is political. You have to understand something, pride and politics often do not go hand in hand, and when revealed, is disastrous. I have so much more to say, and I have come to my end, I see that, but I see a lot of you downtown at Starbucks, at restaurants, and you're not masking. Yet you're asking us to mask.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Durella. Next, Bob Saad, come on up.
Good evening, BPS Board, and thank you for your countless hours of voluntary service to the BPS community, as always. This is Bob Saad. If you could ask sometime today for the administration to give the student count, so we can know how close we are to the budget, or how it compared to the, I know I've asked this before, but maybe since we already have the count, maybe you could mention that today. That's just a different topic. So, the other topic I wanted to tell you about is that, um, you know, I've been in the district for well over 20 years. Sharon and I have been here well over 20 years, raised all our children here, oldest one's 15 years old now, going on, going on driving age. But, you know, this year, three in the lower grades and then one in the high school, when it came to masking up, we said, you know, "Hey, we're going to be consistent. We don't think it's a good idea to mask, to breathe your own carbon dioxide for all that long period of time, so we're going to homeschool." So Sharon says, "Okay, we're going to do this," and I was flabbergasted, but she said, "Okay." And I support her, so I'm physically supporting her too and doing some of the teaching at home and the whole thing. Curriculum's ridiculously expensive for homeschool, it costs like five grand, something like that. One of Gabe's high school classes was $500. That's a good story. So, several years ago, we did CPM. So now, I said, "Well, it's very difficult when you do an integrated program for kids to come in in the middle or, or leave early and then be able to pick it up." Bingo. So he took CPM, Integrated Math 1, Integrated Math 2, and now he's ready for Integrated Math 3, and CPM doesn't have an online program, because as CPM told me on the phone, they don't have a program that works well with an online format, because it's such a collaborative program. So now we got to find, um, a, uh, an integrated 3 program that's not CPM. So, there's a principal here in, in the alternative school, great guy. He helped us so much, give us some alternatives, and, um, just wonderful, wonderful. Really enjoyed corresponding with him, but we went through three or four iterations, and we finally found one that, that would give us integrated 3. And then, um, it's like 500 bucks, and the school district doesn't pay for it, because Gabe's not enrolled in five classes. So this is exactly the scenario that we didn't want to happen. This is what I warned you about several years ago. When you have a program that's lockstep for three years like that, you're pushing away families. You're not giving new families an opportunity to join in, and you're, you're pushing away families that, that otherwise would want to stay. That being the case, let's try and think outside the box, how we can draw some of our families back in, hopefully the Saads, because that is, as it is right now, there's not a space for us in the public school system in Birmingham, and that's very, it's, as you might imagine, that's very difficult for me, um, very difficult. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Saad. Thank you very much. Next, Mr. O, Mr. Samuel O. Next, Mr. O, Mr. Samuel O. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. This is I. Good evening. I've come to speak to you several times, and I've asked myself, "Why do I even need to be here? Why can't the district correct its own mistakes? Why does a parent have to come and say the principals and the superintendents are lying and that they're trying to cover up discrimination within the school system because they want to promote a fictitious high-performance record which doesn't really exist? This is ridiculous. How many times do I have to keep on coming here until someone actually listens? Because if Mark Dresniak and Alex Aegis and Mr. Nefaros did such a good job in two thousand and nineteen, then how come my other younger son had the same discrimination happen to him the following year in two thousand and twenty? Why? If they represent themselves as having done a good job of taking care of the problem, how come the same problem reoccurred separately with my younger son? And how come I have to come here to tell you that? How come you don't know that yourselves? This is a real problem. I don't appreciate it, and I'm hoping that you don't appreciate it as well. There needs to be something fixed. And then when I ran because of this reason for the school board, and in the middle of the campaign I was told in silence that I cannot talk about criticizing the school board, I was shocked. The school is bullying the parents. Who are you siding with, if not the community? I can tell you that myriads of people shared with me and said, "Thank you. Thank you for having the courage to speak up," because I had a similar experience. I had eight thousand people vote for me, and I didn't spend a single penny, put a single sign. I didn't ask for any donations, but the community listened to what I had. If the community has spoken, then where is the repudiation for the school system that doesn't listen? I'm still waiting, it's been two years, over two years. And I want to resolve this properly. And if a proper apology was given from the beginning, from the get-go, from the principal, this would have never, ever happened. But yet, he stepped it up every single step of the way. A sincere apology goes a long way.
Mr. O, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O. Next, we have Colleen Zammatt.
Hello.
Hello, and welcome.
Thank you, my name's Colleen Zammatt, three kids in the district. I've come up here a lot, so I know you know me. I wanted to just say it was very interesting hearing the results... Well, the presentation on the equity audit at the study session last week. I would encourage everybody who's listening to these comments to go ahead, review the slideshow, ask questions. And I really look forward to the next presentation and just see some ideas on some of the issues that we continue to have. I'm coming up here once again to address the mask issue. I've been going to a lot of meetings, this meeting, Bloomfield Hill School Board meetings, Oakland County Board of Commissioners meetings. And like the first parent that commented, I do know that the OCHD mask mandate will be lifted hopefully sooner rather than later, and then it will be squarely back in your hands. And so what I would like to put out there is that... Well, I wanted to let you know that there was a parent that actually commented at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, and she talked about several issues, but she made a statement that really stuck with me. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few, and that was a justification for the mask mandate, for vaccine mandates, too. Now, first of all, I just disagree with this premise at all. We are individuals with autonomy to hopefully do the right things for other people, not at personal expense to ourselves unless we so choose. And that is why I reject the mask mandates. But even if I accepted her premise, at this point, the mask mandates are simply protecting or looking to protect the needs of the few over the needs of the many. There is very little risk to our kids. They are the only ones that are being forced to wear masks all day at school. The primary age group that is suffering severe disease and death, even with vaccinations, are the oldest among us. And that is tragic, but we are asking our young kids... I've said this before, I have to keep on saying this. We are asking our kids to protect us. We are asking our kids to give up a lot for something that is not a serious risk to them to protect others in their community. That is not appropriate. Why are we masking? As I've spoken to our superintendent, the main reason for our mask mandate before the OCHD even implemented theirs was we wanted to keep our kids in school. Of course, we want to keep our kids in school. The biggest reason we want to do this is to avoid so many quarantines. Well, the quarantines through the end of last year, about 1.5, maybe a little less, maybe a little more, about 1.5 of all of those quarantines resulted in positive cases. I've asked for the data for the first two months of school, I'll be getting it tomorrow. I would have to assume it's similar, very low, for something that already impacts our kids so little. And I will just conclude and just say, the quarantine recommendations from the county are simply that, they are recommendations. We do not need to follow them.
Thank you so much. Okay, last two public comments for this evening. And so we're now going to move on to our agenda, to our general consent agenda. We have a... We've got, let's see, personnel report, we've got minutes for September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, our regular meeting, minutes for October fifth, twenty-twenty-one study session, minutes for October twelfth, twenty-twenty-one study session, and resolution thirty-five, acceptance of the consent agenda. Trustees, can I get a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Trustee Rass... Or Hokumer, sorry.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rass. Are there any comments on consent agenda, anything to discuss? Okay, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Please note the consent agenda passes seven to zero. Next, we have personnel reports. Mr. Nefaros, welcome.
Good evening. Before you, under the Human Resources Agenda, the Personnel Report, I think was just approved under the Consent Agenda. I was just bringing forward to you the resolution for the board policies that we've been discussing in prior reads, the final version before you. We had essentially three prior reads before this for policy twenty-two sixty and policy twenty-two sixty-six. So we're just bringing the resolution forward to you for approval of those policies.
Trustees, can I get a motion to have resolution thirty-six, approval of board policy? So moved... Moved by Trustee Joseph.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Whitman. Trustees, any discussion, comments? And we have this board policy read to us at least, we've gone over it, I think at two study sessions and one general board meeting. So we did a thorough job, and thank you so much, Mr. Nefaros, for bringing it back to us after the BEA gave us their comments and suggestions. And now we're at the final resolution in passing. So any further comments?
I would just remind the public that we have an ad hoc policy committee for which I serve as chair. Trustee Hokumer is on that committee, and Trustee Ojloony. And while we have reviewed this policy and will vote on it shortly, it also reflects sort of an older version of policy writing that we're trying to move away from. So if you're looking at your packet, you'll notice it's several pages long, includes a lot of procedural things in it. Some of that will stay, it's required by law, and we want to make it very easy for people who believe that they've been harassed to know where to go. But some of that will move from policy to administrative protocols, which will be available online, too. So while we are voting on something that looks like our old format, several pages of policy, we do want to move towards a more streamlined version of policy and then separate policy and internal procedure a little bit more cleanly. So while we'll vote on this today, you might see a new version of it at the end of the school year, hopefully. So I just want to thank you guys. Wherever that... If you have any policy issues, don't hesitate to email me. My email's ayung@birmingham.b12.mi.us. So if it's about this or any other policies, now's the time, since we're really plugging away at that.
Thank you, Trustee Young. Very comprehensive explanation, I appreciate that. So trustees, any other comments?
I just want to say that this was really great teamwork. A lot of trustees put a lot of time into it, and it was really very thorough. So I appreciate everybody doing what they do, that's all.
Thank you, Trustee Joseph. Any other comments, trustee? Okay, those in favor of passing resolution thirty-six, approval of board policy, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, please note, resolution passes seven to zero. Next, we have business service reports. We have the amend resolution ninety-six, which is the purchase and replacement of playground equipment at Pierce Elementary funded by the Pierce Parent Teacher Association, PTA. We have resolution thirty-seven, which is diesel fuel and gasoline procurement. Resolution thirty-eight, which is the Seehome Auxiliary Gym and the Bond Program of two thousand and twenty. So Mr. Larson Chidley, are you ready?
I am ready, thank you.
Thank you, sir, let's go.
Okay, the first resolution for the Pierce Elementary, you actually reviewed and passed this June fifteenth of this year. At that time, we had estimated it as about forty thousand dollars. Actually, the total cost will be forty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents. So I'm bringing that back to recognize that donation from the PTA, Pierce PTA.
And that's why the number is out of sequence, it's resolution ninety-six, because that was back from June.
Yep, thank you.
Trustees, can I get a motion to consider resolution ninety-six, which is the purchase and replacement of the playground equipment at Pierce Elementary School funded by the Pierce PTA?
I move that we approve resolution number ninety-six.
Moved by Hokumer, Trustee Hokumer.
I second. Seconded by Young.
Trustees, any comments? Very generous of the PTA.
I have a question.
Yes.
Jim, which part of the playground is this?
That is the... Oh, it's on the... What's the street, Pierce Street there?
The closest one to Pierce?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so not over by where they're doing the construction?
No, no.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Just to remind them, just to flow through.
Yes, yep.
And thank the Pierce PTA.
The Pierce PTA.
A wonderful way to step up. So thank you to the Pierce PTA. Okay, trustees, all those in favor of passing resolution ninety-six, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, passes seven to zero. Okay, now we move on to resolution thirty-seven. This is the diesel fuel and gasoline procurement.
All right, thank you again. This is to extend our contract with the RKA based on the annual bids from Macomb Oakland County Fuel Consortium report, and this is a zero increase from last year.
Trustees, can I get a motion to consider resolution thirty-seven?
I move to support resolution thirty-seven, diesel fuel and gasoline.
Moved by Trustee Rass.
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Young. Trustees, do we have any comments or questions on the diesel fuel and gasoline procurement?
I have a question. I'm assuming that the large jump is due to the fact that we are running our buses
Yes.
for the full year. So this is fifteen routes a day or whatever the number is.
More like about fifty-six routes, yeah. And you were close.
Not really, but...
You were talking special ed routes, I'm sure, that was fifteen. So if you go back two years ago, I believe the total cost was approximately two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So that would be about that, the... That would be the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Okay, thank you.
Trustees, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Can this thirty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar amount be adjusted based on any new purchases of an alternate fuel bus?
Yeah, yeah. This is just an estimate, you know, that we would spend not to exceed three hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you. So just to add on that, so this does not in any way add pressure or influence the decision for what type of buses we're looking to purchase for bond monies in the future?
No, none whatsoever. This is just to purchase diesel fuel for this year based on the buses that we have.
Thank you.
This is an annual resolution, correct?
It is, yep.
Okay, trustees, all those in favor of passing resolution thirty-seven, the diesel fuel and gasoline procurement, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Again, we have unanimous vote of seven to zero. Organizing the next resolution. We have Seehome Auxiliary Gym, this is resolution number thirty-eight.
Okay, I'm going to tee this up for Scott Smith from Plant Maran Cressa. This is, we have reviewed this with the bond oversight and then also went over it at the last study session. And then after that, we're going to have our architects. Our architects for the secondary IDS, that will be Adrian Lutona and Brandon Sunberg. There's Adrian. And then for the K eight, we'll have GMB, that's Ron Bozwinkel and Doris Gross. And they will be going over the quarterly report of projects and projects to come. And we went over that with bond oversight also. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Jim. Hey, good evening, good to see everyone. I guess we'll lead with the current resolution, which is the auxiliary gym, which is what we refer to as bid pack two-nine and two-fifteen. As Jim mentioned, this is essentially the same packet that was reviewed prior. The only update would be we did amend the letter since the last study session, as we discussed, to include our elevator award recommendation. That bid was a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So you'll see a slight adjustment upward in the actual amounts. But with that, I guess, would you guys like me to read the updated numbers? Okay. Let me get those, I had those written down. And I did want to ask, too, is it possible for our next... To bring that presentation on the screen? Awesome, thank you. So our new totals, the actual hard construction totals are sixteen million, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. CM, general conditions reimbursables of five hundred and fourteen thousand, one forty-four, an adjusted contingency of one million, two hundred, one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one, equating to seven and a half percent of the hard construction cost. Brings the total recommendation tonight before you for seventeen million, seven hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Are there any questions at this time?
Just so we can inform the public, what's... How much is it more than the budget?
The hard construction is approximately four point two million over the original allocated budget for that project, but it is within the overall budget with Seehome High School.
And Scott, just for the community's sake, can you... I know we talked at like the other study session, but that's comparable to what Gross is receiving as well. I mean, similar, just so, because our study sessions aren't taped anymore, so...
Oh, sure.
Just for the community's sake, if you could just share that they're similar in scope or that they'll have basically the same.
We're looking at the same kind of plan, understanding the differences of the sites. You'll see the solutions are different, and I think for the community, if they can stay on, and you'll see the differences in our presentation later with some of the slides and stuff. You can see what we're getting, but how it's different, but... but how it's different, but yet the same.
Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions or comments?
I know that some of the visual signs of that I had seen before tonight. Thank you.
Okay, trustees, can I get a motion to consider Resolution 38? Passing the Seehome Auxiliary Gym.
I move that we approve Resolution 38.
Moved by trustee Holkemer. Seconded by trustee McKinney. Trustees, do we have any other comments or questions? If you want to give to Scott or, I know that we've gone over this quite a bit and I really appreciate that because it helps us and I think the community understand where all that money is going, why the increase of costs happened, and what the results are going to be. I mean, I know everybody drives by and they see how busy at work the construction is all around, both at Seehome and at Groves. Excuse me. This is a good example of our tax money at work. Did we have anything else?
Yeah, just real quick as a comment also as far as why the numbers are off. One of the things Scott mentioned in the study session was, hey, when we did it, you know, we did it based on what we know then, home, we're going to have, I don't know, is the rate of inflation on all the scenarios? I'm the economist, but I'm sure it's a lot of inflation, so that's what changed the figure, am I correct?
That's a big part of it, yes.
Yes, thank you. That's it.
Okay, trustees, all those in favor of passing Resolution 38, Seehome Auxiliary Gym, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Thank you so much. And next, we are looking at our technology report.
No.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Got the bond presentation. Pardon me, I'm looking at the agenda here.
Trying to steal stuff. Big moment.
This is for the pictures, probably?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to start with just kind of a brief update and then I will introduce our architectural teams who are with us tonight to help share some of the exciting progress we're making on the upcoming projects and just give the board and the community just an update on where we're headed and what's looking forward to coming up next year. Actually, some of it's starting this fall.
You know, even though we can't see it, I know that in our tablet Joan has included, because she's so prepared and organized, every one of the slides. So we'll just use.
How's that? There we go. Okay, so good evening again. Just a quick agenda for tonight to talk about the scope of the work, our organizational chart, just a quick update on projects that are in progress right now with the, with the primary focus being on our Phase Two, our upcoming work. This slide, just as a reminder to the community, that we passed $195 million bond. A big chunk of it is our construction projects, our facility and site improvements, building additions, but Zach and his team have been busy. We have almost $25 million set aside for technology and security, roughly eight and a half million for buses and almost seven and a half million for what we call FFNE, furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on the, the facility and site improvement. I like this slide here because I, I think it's important for everybody to understand. Sometimes you'll see me up here, but there's a, a large team behind that's been very busy over the last year and a half, completing work, designing work, attending meetings and meeting with various representatives across the district. So again, we have GMB and IDS, we're both here tonight. Those are our architectural teams, but GMB working on our K8s and IDS on our high schools and our Annex or Birmingham Adult Transition Program. Our construction management team is Rockford Construction and they're working with GMB on our K8s and Art Mello Builders, again, paired up with IDS on our high school projects. We have Bart Mello Technology, who's working with our technology team. And then additional consultants as well, Structure Tech, which has been busy with our roofing projects, ChemTech, survey work, Arch Environmental Group is the district's environmental consultant, and they've been around for a number of years, as well as MTC, who is our materials testing and geotechnical engineer on the project, district wide. Our Phase One recap, so we always refer to things in bid packages. I know that doesn't always mean something to our community, but our bid pack 1.1 is really all the work that's happening over at Pierce Elementary. So over the summer, we completed all of our Series One renovations, which I would say is the heavy lift in terms of the interior work. Work on the addition is ongoing. In fact, they're putting the roof on that this week, so we're, we're going to be enclosed soon and start finishes later this fall within their plan for an early spring completion on the addition. There is a little bit of work to do next summer, once we turn over the new addition and work on converting the old cafeteria kitchen into, into some classroom space. So we'll wrap up next summer on that project. Our generator project is our bid pack one dash two. We've been busy pulling a lot of the wire and, and getting ready for the actual delivery of the unit, which we have not quite received all the parts yet. We're planning for that later this fall. And then we're currently coordinating the installation of that with Technology Services because that is over at BCS where the District Network Operations Center is. So there's some coordination with the shutdown associated with that. Switching over to the high school campus, we have our two dash one, which was press box replacements at both schools, high schools, and as well as the new grandstands you'll see over at Groves. It was a push, but we got both of those ready for each site's first home game. And they've been used throughout the season. Over at Seehome, we had a slew of interior projects, the main one being the counseling space, as well as the conversion of three classrooms in the lower level, a set of toilet rooms that we, we did, we called them our pilot toilet rooms. And we also did a little bit of work over in the assistant principal office. That work's substantially complete. The classrooms that we built are now being utilized by the students in the VATP program while we renovate the, the classrooms over there. Bid pack two dash three, this was a few different things. This was the maintenance building out in front of the EAC at Groves, along with the tennis courts and a transportation building over at the bus yard. These projects have been a little bit of a challenge. We've, we've had several setbacks throughout, but we are hoping to be complete late this month, early next month with most things. Working through a few material procurement type issues and, and lead time issues, as well as just working through some, just some challenges that have continually occurred on that site. Our transportation building, that's starting to come along now too, starting to get enclosed. The only issue with that one is we're still waiting on a permit from the state to really finalize that building. So we'll continue to track that and follow up with the state periodically. Over at Midvale, we had two main projects. We had the parking lot expansion as well as our emergency generator. The parking lot went really well this summer. Our generator project, again, delays with the generators district wide, statewide really with those, but that's planning to come in later this month and we're ready to install that upon completion. And then lastly, over at the Annex, we're again, our Birmingham Adult Transition Program. That work is well underway. The masonry is going up and it's really going up well. That site's moving on and it's on schedule. We'll complete that and then we'll transition into the interior renovations next summer and wrap that up towards the end of next summer, August 2022. Looking ahead, this is just really a list, a high level list. We talked a little bit about this last week at our dashboard report, but with our Program One, which again is our K8s, we have Berkshire Middle School renovations, we have West Maple, the Secure Vestibule addition over at West Maple, over at the high schools, Groves Stadium Buildings, which was our bid pack two, seven, which you guys reviewed in September. We have baseball, softball, practice field work. That work just went out for bid today. We're still doing work on our water infiltration or in our EAC improvements. And we're just wrapping up our middle stages of design, which we refer to as design development for the auxiliary gym over at Groves. Over at Seehome, we have the auxiliary gym and plaza improvements, as well as the track and tennis. That was the resolution you guys just passed, as well as the maintenance building. That's a project we just took bids on since our, our last study session and we're working through those bids in preparation for bringing those before you in November. And baseball, softball, and practice field and ropes course, that work is being bid concurrent with the work over at Groves, very similar packages, and looking to leverage a lot of the economies there and attract a lot of bids and especially folks in the artificial turf industry. District wide, we are looking to, we call them drinking fountains. They're really bottle fillers for those that are listening, but they're chilled and filtered water and there's quite a bit of them. They're being deployed differently. Currently, we're taking bids on them at the K8 level tomorrow morning. And we're wrapping up design at the high schools and those will be going out to bid later this year or early next year, again, for implementation in the 2022 calendar year. This really is, is for the board, but this is just kind of a look ahead to what, what you can expect in your board packets. This, this evening, we got our Phase Two presentation, which we're doing now, and we just passed the resolution for two, nine, two, 15. Next month, starting with the November 2nd board meeting, our Program One, which is a few things, is the renovations at Berkshire, which is probably the big project there, a smaller project than the Secure Vestibule at West Maple, and our district wide drinking fountain replacements. And then also at the high school level, bid pack two, eight, which is our Seehome Maintenance Building. Fast forwarding to December, these will be the, we'll call them athletic field work, baseball, softball, practice fields. And at Groves, there's a, a parking lot expansion there on the northwest corner. We have a few more packages yet to bid. The timing on that's still a bit, little bit in flux, but we're, again, drinking fountain work at Groves and Seehome and our Groves and EAC water infiltration slash improvements bid pack.
Last, in our last studies question, Bingham Farms was slated for summer of 2022 for their playground. Is that still going to happen? I know the 2024 for renovations, but their playground, there was something on the sheet that said 2022, but I didn't notice it on here and I didn't, last week I didn't see that West Maple was on there. So I'm just curious, is that replacing Bingham or is Bingham still in the mix or?
Yeah, no, good question. No, and you'll see it on our future slides too. The intention is to, now that we've got Berkshire pretty much through the bidding process, is to transition into those discussions with Bingham Farms, see what can be do, what can be done with respect to the playgrounds for next year or next summer. We're up against some lead times and some, we just need to understand what we want to do there and make sure we understand where we want to put it. We don't want to do anything that would disrupt potential future additions there as well. So those meetings have started since then and that's, that's something we're actively looking into now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I turn it over to our architectural team from GMB? With us tonight is Ron Bozwinkel. He's our project lead with GMB. Ron, if you could take us through what's planned for next summer over at our K8s.
Thank you for, for having us tonight. We appreciate the, the time. With me also, I have Doris Gross, who's our project manager. She's been instrumental in keeping our teams on track with these projects. Berkshire, earlier, one of, one of the board members said something to the effect of seeing all the progress that's going on outside with, with the construction as you're driving by. Berkshire is going to be a little bit of a different project than that because a lot of the, the work that's going on in, in the building is actually going on inside the building. It's some, going to be something that's not largely going to be seen from the outside. But I did want to go through some of the highlights of the different things that are going on in that building. If you look at that, if you look at the plan of the building and you see all the colored areas of that, those are areas that are going to be touched by construction in some, in some way, shape, or form, whether it's with, you know, the heavy renovation that we're showing in, in the cafeteria area and the food service area or the media center where we're doing, you know, kind of a wholesale cosmetic upgrade to that. But the, the flooring, ceilings, all throughout the entire building in the classroom areas, as you see shaded in yellow, is going to make a major impact on, on the building. We've got a few different photos here that we're showing before, not really before and afters, but before and planned. The, the before is on the left-hand side where you're looking at the cafeteria with the, the checkerboard kind of pattern that you're seeing there. That's going to be taken out. We're replacing that with, with LVT, which is a luxury vinyl tile product. It's something that's commonly being used throughout all of our projects that we're, that we're working on. And it provides a slightly softer feel to, to, to the feet and, and, you know, can be a little bit more acoustically absorptive. The, the bottom left-hand corner is the existing serving line and we're trying to open that up so that you've got a little bit more view to the cafeteria so you can monitor it a little bit more effectively. And we're taking away a smaller area that was on the one end of the, of the food service area, opening that up so that you don't have two separate areas for, you know, point of purchase items that are, that are happening in, in essentially what's a snack shop, you know, so that you didn't have two different monitoring activities there and you could just open that up. Going on to some corridor improvement.
That is fantastic.
I appreciate that.
I spent 25 and a half years at Berkshire and I'm telling you, I'm looking at this just saying, wow.
Was it, was it the last half of the year that tipped you over the edge with Berkshire? So, so yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah. The, the, the rendering on the left-hand side shows the, the corridor flooring improvements that we're looking at. What we're trying to do with that was, was, you know, provide something that gave a little bit of energy to the space, but complemented the existing lockers. One of the other things that, that is going to be a, a major change in, in Berkshire is, is the elimination of the red doors. Okay, if, as you work, walk, walk through Berkshire, you know, currently, that's one of the pervasive colors that you see as you go through the entire building. Couldn't get rid of it in all cases. If you look at the, if you look at the rendering on the right-hand side, that's just showing you some of the graphics that we're looking at, putting up on the, the high part of the walls just to, you know, provide a little bit, bit more life in the space in the gymnasium. The, the red duct work unfortunately is one of those items that we figured that it was probably not time to replace that only because it was, it was a high expense item to do so, just to, to eliminate the red in that one area.
You mean the fire door?
No, the, the, the red duct work that you see in the upper portion of the photo.
Okay. And what color are the doors now?
The colors of the doors going to be, they're going to be more, they're going to be a wood tone.
Wood tone?
Yes, yep. Existing pool photograph on the upper left-hand corner, and these are renderings of, of the, the new aesthetic that we're looking for there, replacing the, the tile on the deck and replacing the bleachers. We do still want to have the bleachers be retractable so that you can use that as training space when, when they're not being used as seating spaces, but, and, and again, lighting upgrades that are going to make a, a major impact on that space as well. One of the other things that's unseen is the area that's underneath the pool where there was, you know, some heavy water infiltration. We're trying, taking, you know, steps to, to mitigate that as well. Media Center, these are not, there are not any existing photos on this. These are all renderings, but, but again, what we're trying to do is, is open up the space in the, in the, if you're, if you're coming from the front to the back of, of the media center, if you know the space, the back left area, if you're, if you're coming through the main doors, would be made into a maker space area with some resilient flooring products in there so that, that, you know, it can be, you know, set up, torn down, moved around easily. And I don't want to say that, that we're trying to encourage messes, but in maker spaces, sometimes you are. And so that, that lends itself to that. Replacing the circulation desks, replacing the ceiling area or the ceiling plane. So again, that, that is going to be a major improvement in that space.
Is it carpeted?
It is mostly carpeted. The only, you know, the only area is if you look at that, that lower right-hand photo where that maker space is there, that would be that resilient flooring that gives you the ability to, to scrub it down and, and mop it up, but the rest of it would be carpeted.
It also helps with sound.
It does. West Maple, the, the, the primary thing that we're doing there is, is providing, providing a secure entry alternative to, to, as to what they have right now. Currently, as you walk into the building, what happens is you walk directly into the corridor areas and you can go left, right, go and be in the corridor fabric. What we're doing is we're routing people through that vestibule area into the office so that they, that the office staff has a chance to, to engage the people that are coming into there before they, before they get into the, the building at large. As Scott said, district-wide drinking fountain replacements. It is a combination of drinking fountains and bottle fillers. The code requires us to have drinking fountains. It's one of those situations where a lot of, in a lot of cases, people said they would like to get rid of the drinking fountains, but it's something that we still are having to do from a code perspective. We did work with, with Elon Batanzo? Batanzo, thank you. I knew I was gonna skip that one. Elon Batanzo, and, you know, she provided a little bit of oversight to us, you know, toward the end of the project, and we, you know, got her assurance that we were reacting in a responsible way with the conditions that we have throughout the district. And then the last one was Bingham Farms Playground Improvements, which Scott had discussed earlier.
Can I ask a quick question regarding one of the earlier comments, you mean as far as being inside versus outside? And just make suggestions, if all possible, you can get some of these nice colored pictures and put them up on a banner or something, so that people can see what's happening inside.
Yep, we'll work with the construction managers to make sure that those get presented on the sites. Back to you, Scott.
Hey, thank you, Ron. Thank you, Doris. You know, to add to that, Luke, we're gonna be adding, I don't know if you've seen them over at Groves, Seehome, and Pierce, but we have those bond signs that say preserving purpose, passion, and pride. We have a sign already made up. Once the time's appropriate, we'll be moving that there, too, to let the community know we're actively working on that project. And that project really will get kicked off right around spring break over there. Are there any more questions on our first program, Berkshire, West Maple? Any of that work?
No, but I have to say that I was very impressed that you were able to get Grove Stadium done in time for the first game. It was a little joke that they weren't afraid, people weren't afraid to go in there because it was done so quickly. They're like, I'm not sure, it's safe for us to go in here. And I'm like, yes, it is. So I was very impressed that you did it so quickly.
Thank you, yeah. We didn't have a whole lot of time to spare, and that's, that part's definitely true. But we did get our testing company to review it. We had the state building inspector out, all that stuff, before the first game. And then I'm gonna introduce Adrian Latona. Adrian is one of the big designers for IDS, and he's been very instrumental in programming a lot of the auxiliary gym spaces, the team rooms over at Groves. A lot of these big improvements, Adrian's had the vision to start with that programming. So I'm gonna introduce Adrian Latona with IDS. He'll take us through the slides.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having me here this evening. Before we get started, I just want to recognize that the work you're gonna see tonight is really the result of many voices coming together, not only our side, but from Birmingham's side as well. We've been working closely with Jim, with the athletic directors, the coaching staff, facilities, to really create a group of projects that we feel is gonna be inspirational for the community and for the students at large. So thank you for that. And I just want to recognize, early on, we really created four main goals that we were trying to achieve with these projects. The primary one being equity, along with communicating that sense of pride and passion that the district and the community has for its facilities. We wanted to make sure that we were creating safe spaces, and also make sure that the spaces we were creating were meaningful, inspirational for educators and students. So with that, I'm gonna start with Groves here, our first project, project two dash one, which is the facelift of the bleachers. Here at Groves, it was really about creating spaces for the community to come together, and that started with this addition of the brick piers over at the bleachers, bringing in the school brick, and it'll continue to evolve as two seven starts to be built. Two seven is the team building space. This will include a large public plaza for everyone to gather during games. It will also include concessions buildings. It'll include locker rooms for the teams, as well as relocating the existing Groves Falcon as kind of a photo opportunity when you first walk into the plaza.
That's kind of stadium.
Not quite that scale, but we're getting close. We also incorporated a number of canopies here to keep visitors dry from the rain. This is the new concessions building here. We're increasing the size. It's about 1.5 times the size of the existing concession space.
Now, are these pictures probably up? I did see one or two of the others, but I don't think that's in the, are these up yet?
I don't believe these are up yet on the site, but I think once construction begins, these renderings will start to be posted up there. The interior of the spaces, as you can see here, there's a lot of program on the insides of these buildings to help bolster the student-athlete performance. So particularly at the team building, we now have locker rooms housed over at Falcon Field, along with meeting spaces. And what that means is students are no longer traveling across the parking lot in full gear, trying to get to practice and trying to get there at halftime, so improving the safety. Overall, looking at Groves Campus Master Plan, we're looking at improving the quality of the fields and linking them with something that we're calling the promenade, trying to create that campus identity here, so that it doesn't feel so separated from the high school building. Some other views of the new varsity softball field, varsity baseball field. There's also an auxiliary gym. This for.
Auxiliary gym will house space for basketball, volleyball, as well as classroom space.
Going through some of the images here, we've got batting cages in here, tiered classroom, golf simulators, and on the exterior face of the building, we actually have, yes.
Do you agree to go back to slide?
Of course.
Why are we keeping that wall with the three D things on it?
I'm glad you asked. So this, that is actually part of the curriculum, yep. And with this addition, we're actually gonna be covering up the existing one on the north side of the auditorium, and the team felt it was a pretty cool feature to have at a high school. So here, we're actually showcasing it. So it becomes part of the building rather than added onto the building. Now, this will be a totally new wall, new grips, new belay bars, new panels, but there's also a small teaching kind of classroom space right below it. And you'll see in some of the later images, we've got some viewing areas in the track. You can actually see it from the inside of the building as well. So I'm gonna keep going. The interiors here, you can see the tiered classroom there on the right. On the left, you've got some views of the gymnasium on the inside, great views out to the new football stadium. And then in the lower right-hand corner, you can see one of the lookouts out to the practice fields across the parking lot, and from that lookout, you can actually see that rock climbing wall as well. Moving on to Seehome. Seehome's a very different site than Groves. Seehome is much more compact, and because of that, in this design, we were really trying to figure out, how can we save as much space for the students as possible while maximizing this program? So the exact same spaces here over at Seehome as we saw at Groves, just a different layout in order to take advantage of that site. So here, all of those team and stadium spaces are down on the first floor. Up above that, you have the auxiliary gym and the track spaces.
Adrian, if you go back, what's this wiggly lines that look like they might be outlines of states, but I can't say which one.
These lines right here?
Yeah.
That is actually a piece of signage. So that is the Seehome Maples logo on the west face of that building.
Oh, I see, the ads and, yeah.
And the maple leaf there, yep. The goal was to get some branding on there subtly, but still something so that when you walk into the stadium, you know you're walking into Naples Field.
It's gonna be colored, right? So you can see it.
Yep.
A follow-up question would be, I love the follow-up, for the students, how will be determined which students will be up there? Are they wanting to be entertainable, or will they be content?
The banners themselves that you see in the renderings, those are kind of placeholders right now, and we're actually working through with the graphics company, now that they're on board, what will those images consist of? And we want to make sure that they're done in a way that they are interchangeable. We, you know, nothing's worse than having graphics that have been on there for 10 years and need to swap out, so that'll be key as well going through the process. Going on to the next slide here, you can see the floor plans. Again, that first floor houses a majority of the classroom spaces and team function spaces. Once you get to the second floor, you have the auxiliary gym itself, and then on the mezzanine level, the running track. Some views in the interior, this should look very similar to what we saw at Groves, pretty familiar there. And then the exterior, again, much like Groves, we're updating those athletic fields, connecting them with walkways and lightings, because those fields are not only there for students, but they're also there for community use as well, recognizing how important of an amenity that is for the whole Birmingham community. Some views of the backside here, you can see the varsity softball field. So the building itself is integrated into the site and becomes this actual scoreboard for the softball field now. So we kind of joke, it's become the maroon monster, much like Boston's green monster. Updating of the tennis courts, moving of the ropes course to facilitate a more efficient layout there. And then wrapping up here with phase two projects, as Scott mentioned, working towards the water infiltration resolutions and updating those bottle fillers and drinking fountains.
Thank you, Adrian. Very well done, thank you.
I have a quick question, just as we have the money. We have quite, I mean, it is bustling when you come here in the evenings, on the weekends, with a lot of outside observations in our facilities. Do we have any plans to change our fees for utilization or anything?
The fees for?
Yeah, so we actually, we rent, you're right, we do rent quite a bit with our facilities. This is a great opportunity for us. We have not started to discuss how we're gonna break down the auxiliary gyms yet, because obviously, those would be a new fee structure. In January of this year, I and the community ed team will be looking at just in general our full fee structure, and then what that would look like with new facilities coming in.
And do we charge a fee for the football field?
We do. Yep, we make approximately between the two schools about $75,000 to $150,000 for a year, for the weekends. That's not even during the weeks.
Okay, thank you.
And then one more question to the general public, or where does this go?
Uh, gym. There you go.
I think that's an excellent lead-in, too. Those are all things we've been considering when we are doing our site logistics for the, both of these. There, there's nothing more busy than a high school site, and it doesn't matter what time of the day it is, or if it's a weekday, or really a weekend. So we've, we've gotta be conscious of that. You'll see a lot of fencing going up, and it will be here for a while. In fact, over at Groves, we're actually going to be, we've been coordinating with Susan Smith and Tom Flynn about how we're gonna safely take that back road off, and we're gonna force people to use the west side and the east side, and there will be no middle ground for a couple of years, really. And so that's an important part, and that goes with the safety of the staff, students, and as well as the, and able to facilitate the work that's planned for those spaces. So Seehome's the same thing. You're dropping a big building right in the middle of campus there, and so those are all things we'll have to monitor with our construction management teams, and something that'd be top of mind. But I just want to say thank you for letting us present tonight, and it's, we've done a tremendous amount of work. We're very proud of it, and thank you for allowing us to showcase it to you guys and the community tonight.
God, and the team, this has been a wonderful update. Thank you so much, very informative, pictures are great, and we actually, you know, can see where the money is going and the work that is being put forth. So we thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
And team, and team.
Yes, guys, and the team, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, moving along, we have an amendment to Resolution 33 that was passed last general board meeting, and that's why it's number 33, and this is for technology updates in boardroom, we had to adjust the cost.
Yeah, so it was $10,000. The difference was $10,000 less coming from the cable board grants, and that difference is coming from the 2015-18 bond. And so we just wanted to make sure that, for the record, for the community, that we have the numbers correct, and we wanted to amend this resolution so that it showed the correct numbers. And still, the total amount of upgrades did not change, it's just, again, the amount coming from the grant versus how much came from the bond.
Trustees, so I have a motion to consider Resolution 33 to amend a board contract for boardroom technology updates. Move by trustee Joseph.
Support.
Support by trustee McKinnon. Trustees, do you have any questions? Yeah, I think this is pretty straightforward. Okay. If not, then all go to favor of passing Resolution 33, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 33, pass at seven zero. Now that concludes our resolutions. Oh, no, we have one more. This is the, another amend Resolution 14, which is our board representation assignment for the 2021, 2022 year with the audit committee. Excuse me. Trustees, direct the motion to consider.
The amendment was that we added audit committee?
No, we, when we added the finance committee last year, we combined it with the audit committee. But now, we want to have a separate audit committee and a finance committee. The finance committee will continue to meet once a month. The audit committee just has the same two-meeting obligation throughout the year, but the president must sit on the audit committee.
And I wasn't previous, I was just.
Yeah. We have to pick that, and I just had FOMO, I couldn't be offbeat.
I wasn't clear.
Trustees. Can I get a move? No, no.
I moved to amend Resolution 14 board representation assignments for the 21, 22 year adding the finance committee.
Resolut to accept, amendment. Resolution moved by trustee Brett, and seconded by trustee Whitman. Any questions, comments? Thank you for the explanation, trustee, welcome.
And so we have this, finance committee, audit committee, and we divided them up. So we're gonna be separated. We're going to see original, resolution had these two. So we broke them up, and we put some void on this, the audit committee.
Oh, okay. But it's fine.
Because she said, you moved to accept the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Luke, when you say you moved to accept the amended resolution.
Sure, I moved to accept the amended resolution.
That blew. I moved, sorry, I moved to accept the amended Resolution 14 board representation assignments for 2021, 2022.
And I seconded that. So all those trustees in favor of passing the amended Resolution 33 on the technology update for our boardroom, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
You said technology update.
I said, I mean board representation assignment. I meant board representation. And it's only Tuesday. For 2021, 2022. John, did you catch up there?
I got it off.
I know. I know. So all of those in favor of passing Resolution 14, which is the board representation assignment, to amend them, to amend the board resolution assignment, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, seven zero. And that moves us to our calendar. I just want to say really quick that next, for the November 2nd, we have a study session. It's held at six o'clock. Our general board meeting is on the, is it the 16th? November 16th, I believe. And the location will be in the Groves Auditorium. And anyone else announce?
Yeah, just wanted to announce that October. Yeah, just wanted to announce that October 29th, which is the Friday before Halloween, is a half-day for all students. It will be time for our teachers to have professional development in the afternoon. Also, coming up is open house at both of our high schools. Sea Home's open house will be November 1st and Grove's open house will be November 4th. And to kick off the open house, we have a video, Birmingham's back, that I credit to Ann Crone's team. And we can just briefly watch the Birmingham's back video.
And team, so well done. I loved it.
And Alan.
Alan, and Mike, you guys are awesome. You always make Matthew captain. Thank you so much. And ladies and gentlemen, unless we have any other announcements, this actually brings our meeting to its conclusion. We get in 8:42. Thank you so much for coming. Thanks, everyone. Evening adjournments.